Good evening, everyone. Welcome to New Market Town Council Meeting for May 18th, 2016. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Administrator, do you want to...
Mr. Chair, I'd ask the council to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign deed waivers for the following properties. MAP R2, Lot 86, Sub Lot 19. MAP U3, Lot 117, Sub Lot 2. MAP U3, 117, Sub Lot 28. MAP R2, Lot 86, Sub Lot 27. MAP U3, Lot 117, Sub Lot 36. MAP U4, Lot 21, Sub Lot B. MAP U3, Lot 117, Sub Lot 56. MAP R2, Lot 86, Sub Lot 23. And MAP R2, Lot 86, Sub Lot 30.
So moved. Drive a second.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Next on the agenda, Public Forum at 7:04. Seeing no one in the audience, there is no public comment at 7:04. And do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the May 4th, 2016 meeting?
So moved.
Drive a second.
Second.
Any changes, questions from anyone? Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Would you like to give us your town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, my unwritten report. I want to make the town council aware that we have taken possession of the Eagles as of this Monday. We have secured the services of a realtor to begin marketing that. Public Works has been in to begin some of the cleaning that we'll need to do. Any cost to the town will be billed upon sale of the property. So when the property sells, we only receive the amount of taxes plus any associated costs associated with selling it.
That's the 23rd or the sixth, or last Monday?
This past Monday.
Sixteenth.
Yeah, 16th.
Thank you.
So. And another item, before we get into the written report, I just want to let the council and public know that the Recreation Director, Jim Hilton, has informed me of his intention to retire this coming January. Jim has worked for the town for almost 30 years as its rec director. I know also, just from statewide, talking to other rec directors, that he's had a large impact on the recreation profession in the state. Being so close to university, he mentored many people going through the program over there. And so he's had many influences across the state for that. He's, Jim's provided me plenty of time to find a replacement, and I will begin advertising this summer and fall. The reason for that would be this period of time is their busy season, they're getting ready. So after the programming's done, they can focus on it more. So we will be undertaking that later this year. My written report, as the town council knows, we conducted our first citizen survey this past month. Online participation is over, and we're currently entering hard copy responses and accepting them until the 27th. Overall, it was actually a really good project. We received 531 responses, which I was very surprised at, just for the number.
Was it good or bad?
Good.
Nine thousand residents?
Yeah, no, that's good. It's a good sampling. With a 78% completion rate, that was the other thing we were worried about, is how many people. And so we're currently analyzing responses and having them for the town council in June. But yeah, it's something I think we'll be using as a tool in the future. Tax bills, we're currently working on updating the records for the issues to the tax bills, and they should be mailed at the beginning of June with the due date in the beginning of July. Just an update on the fiscal year 16 operating budget. With 83% of the year completed, we have expended 77% of the total operating budget and 79% of the general fund budget. We're running about 3% below last year at this time. There are no concerns, however, we continue to monitor expenditures. Not surprisingly, there were some significant differences last year and this year as it relates to snow removal. Overtime last year for the Public Works, we expended 142%, while this year we're at 56%. Salt was 121%, and this year we're at 84%. And we use some of those funds to refill the shed, so we're ready for next year. Winter snow removal contracts were expended at 239%, and this year we're at 30%. On the revenue side, we're on target to meet and probably exceed our estimates. We've begun, as everyone knows, more accurately budgeting for our revenues, and that is apparent from this budget. Motor vehicle registrations are higher than last year by about $90,000. So we're anticipating we'll be right about on the estimate. Building permits are slightly higher, the same, but the same situation. Recreation Revolving Fund is doing well, collecting $33,261 over what was collected last year. This is actually due to higher than anticipated revenues for programming and the coming summer program. One of the things they did also was they accepted online payments for programming, and we've seen an uptick in that usage as well. So people are registering earlier by doing that. I provide the council with a copy of the Future Land Use Chapter, the master plan. This is just for your information only. This is a, an item that the planning board would ultimately act on. And they had a public hearing at their last meeting last week, and the amendment includes the Future Land Use Map with changes for a residential coastal protection district and a continuing care, retirement overlay district, and Route 108 corridor overlay district, and recommendations related to zoning for economic development, and a developer's guide for climate change and shore land protection, stormwater management, property maintenance, and junkyard. Again, I provide you all with a copy. They will be bringing it up at their next meeting on June 14th and having discussion. I believe the Economic Development Committee will be invited to attend and sit, and I know the consultant will be attending at that meeting as well to explain the reasoning.
Just along that line, it might be a good idea for people who have any questions to, this is all online.
Yep, absolutely.
They can glean this either on the EDC portion of it or from our packet, obviously. And I might also want to remind people that this, the EDC was taking the advice and the background work done by the consultants that the town hired. This was not something that the EDC came up with on their own, just so some people seem to think that the EDC did this without getting input.
Yeah. The next item is that on May 10th, Vice Chair Phil Nizaro presented Cecilia Illingsworth with the Boston Post Kane as the oldest resident of New Market. Mrs. Illingsworth was born in New Market on March 15th, what, 1916, not 2016, she would have been quite young, to Felix Sobezenski and Eva Sobezenski. She was her 10th child. Cecilia, who was named Celia, grew up on Central Street with her family. And as a child, she attended St. Mary's School in New Market, which is this building. She married Norming Illingsworth in New Market and moved to Exeter Road. She worked most of her life in the shoe factories, as a stitcher in New Market and throughout the seacoast area. She's a longtime member of St. Mary's Parish, and throughout her life was active with the church youth group. She played the organ at St. Mary's well into her 80s. And so Cecilia is our current Boston Post Kane recipient and oldest resident. And that is all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the administrator? Counselor Thompson?
Not so much questions, but in going through the department reports attached to this, I wanted to give some kudos, one to Sean in the Water Department, Sean Gregg, for catching the leak at the post office. He had noted a 5% normal loss rate of water that bumped to 16%, and I appreciate their monitoring and them getting right on that and finding out where the leak was and repairing that. And two pieces of appreciation for Rick Malaski, one for pushing the timeframe for the new ambulance and getting that ordered, that's going to be in a few months earlier than we had thought. And the other one is thank you, Rick, for securing FEMA funds for replacing the culvert out on Bay Road. And that's what I have.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have one quickly. Is our water situation actually better than it was at this time last year?
No.
As far as, so it's, the wells are actually lower?
Yeah, we're still monitoring that. We're hoping that we can get Macintosh online as soon as possible. We still have not had the rain that we were anticipating, we were hoping for. Sean monitors it all the time. I ask him a couple times a week, where are we, are we there yet? Because we're, when I say that, I'm not asking, are we there yet to drop, to drop it down a level? I'm thinking, are we at that next level in our crisis, basically? To go from stage three to stage four, at which point in time no one would be able to do outside watering.
Are the other towns around us in the same situation?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yeah, it's a, it's a general area. I know Epping and Dover are both having that situation, and we're all just exploring the places where we can drill wells or find other sources of water.
Well, I think people are gonna, you're gonna have to make sure people are cognizant of the fact, you know, that they're gonna have to, well, cut back on...
Yeah, and I, you know, we do, we do enforce it. I know the code enforcement officer and well as Water and Sewer Department have gone out and informed people that you can't use it at this point in time.
I'm on private water.
Yeah.
And, and subject.
Yeah.
But I monitor what I do based on what the town is saying. That's only, that's only smart.
Right.
So even though I don't have to comply, so to speak, it's stupid not to.
Right.
You know? We're all sharing the same water where it comes, wherever it comes from.
Yeah, it says here, the Bennett and the Sewell wells are currently at 31 and 59, respectively, feet, whereas last year it was 2754. That was on page 68. So I...
They're a little up, but we're still in stage three.
That's why I was, that's why I was trying to figure it out. Is it that much?
No, that's not a lot.
Okay. I didn't think it was a lot.
Yeah.
But is it that much? It's not really worse, though, is it?
It's worse because last year we had, we had actually more runoff at this point. We had more runoff from the snow, and that's why it was a little lower this year. I don't, we haven't had any rain. That's the, the big issue we haven't seen.
Spitting and miserable.
Right. I know it's, the numbers aren't there, but I think we're also more accurately looking at it, too.
Started asking. Counselor Pike?
Yeah, I, I was asked by a constituent, they were concerned for the golf course. You know, I, I mean, it's, it's a business that has high value to the town. Now, do they have options? I mean, they could lose their greens. Are they, is there anything else they can do?
We ran into this last year during the summertime because it was extremely hot, and they were concerned about the greens. We don't have the ability to waive it for individuals like that or for individual businesses, but we recommend it, and we were more than willing to work with them to try to get expedited DES permits to allow and use the ponds. Because they have their ponds, and they could pump and try to recharge what they may have through there. I don't know where they ended up with that.
But that would be their best...
Yeah, that'd be the best, is try to find water on site.
Yeah.
And doing it that way. Even if it's not water that could, you know, it doesn't have to be water that's potable. You don't have to drink it.
Right, right.
Be gray water.
Right. You could still use it to water the greens. And I, trust me, I, last year was a, that was probably the one of the most difficult ones we had to deal with, was, you understand it's their livelihood, and they don't have a long season.
Yeah.
But we have to, like I said, we have to make sure people have drinking water first. That's the top priority. And when we do this, that's what we're looking at. It's not just the businesses.
So just along that line, what do you do with the car wash?
Car wash has their own...
You're not shutting them off?
They have their own system.
They don't use any town water?
Don't believe, I'll have to look.
I think they can recycle water.
They do, yeah, it's reclamation of recycled water, and yeah.
Okay, I'd just be curious to know, because I thought at one point, way, way back in the day, they were supposed to, you know, sort of recycle their water.
Right.
But I, I don't know that, it would be, it would be nice to know, if you could confirm it, anyway. Seeing no old business, do I have a motion? It's on page 87.
Don't forget committee reports.
Oh. Any committee reports? You know, Counselor Pike had an interesting committee report last week.
Well, we, already, the town administrator already discussed the Future Land Use Chapter, which was continued to the next planning board meeting. This is the planning board report that I'm giving, giving now. The, there was, it was, there was other lively discussions at the planning board besides the Future Land Use Chapters. The, one that I have mentioned before is there's been an ongoing discussion, discussion of the Grape Street, the, the addition of a four-unit condominium in there that was approved by the, they got a variance from the, from the, what am I trying to say? What's, what's the, where did the variances come from? I'm having a block. Who provides variances when you have...
Oh, zoning board.
Zoning board. I could not come up with zoning board. My apologies, a senior moment.
Good thing.
But, so the Grape Street was, we had a legal opinion on, on whether we could use design criteria as to whether or not to grant approval for their plan. And the meeting was held with the representatives from the developer, representatives of the neighborhood. Mike Hoffman was there, you saw it mentioned in the report. Diane chaired the meeting. They could not come to a consensus for design standards out there. And in the end, the planning board denied the, you know, the approval. It was, the project was not approved on that basis.
Was that a four-unit deal, or was that, is it a four-unit?
It was a four-unit. So we weren't, the, that was where they needed the variance, because it was a reasonably tight fit in a half acre, essentially a half acre, so. So I think the only thing you can say is that it, since it was so, such a tight area, people did feel that the, the abutters had a point when they asked that it fit in with the, with the architecture of the area, the design of the area. So I think that's why, in the end, the, the vote went the way it did on that. But that's, that we had a legal ruling on that, and then was used fairly quickly there.
That was the one, sorry, that was the one that had strange, and it was a driveway that went down between other things.
Yeah, there was essentially this circle that was surrounded when they just had a driveway through, and they, and it was really filled that area with, with four units.
Did they consider going to three units?
Well, the ZBA had granted them the variance for four units. So, and, and there was no, I don't, as I understand, the ZBA, having talked with somebody that, you know, it sounded like, from the ZPA's standpoint, they, they grant the variance or they don't grant the variance. They didn't really have a negotiation about how many units it was going to be. So. So that's, that's how it, that's how it came to the planning board. The, the, all of the buildings in the immediate area were brick, and they were asking for brick. And I think the, the developer made some accommodations, but in the end, they could not come to an agreement, and, you know, it was, I can't remember exactly what the vote was, but it was a split vote, it wasn't, but the...
The zoning board gave, what you just said, the zoning board gave a variance based on not knowing how many units?
They knew how many units. What they weren't able to do is say, well, they, there is, as I understand it, and I was, was not there, but, you know, they, they, they had to vote whether to approve the variance or not approve the variance according to what the developer brought them. It's not like they...
Which was the four units?
They brought them for you.
Okay, I understand, you know.
Okay.
Issue now is aesthetics, I think, correct?
Right, that's, that is a good word. And there was approval for a boundary line adjustment out on Bay Road that was approved. And most of the other things, such as down by the industrial park, the, the lot adjustment down there, those things were continued, and not, no vote was held. And...
You're talking about what, a 10,000 or 20,000 square foot building, something like that?
Yeah, they're, they're putting in another...
It's gonna be where the, where they bought that property, it's sort of at the same elevation as 108, correct? Is that number...
No, it's gonna be down.
It's gonna be below 108.
Yeah, but it's in that area where they bought from Mr. Porteratis?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other committee reports?
We have on the agenda here...
Okay.
It's on our agenda. It's not really a committee report, but we were going to talk a little bit about the agenda for the joint town school meeting, which is May 31st instead of May 24th. The school board couldn't do it on the 24th. So when we, when we, Tony and I talked about it at the last meeting, we asked about May, we said we were gonna, trying to go with May 24th and 31st. We checked with everybody, 24th would work. I don't think we asked specifically whether the 31st would work. But it works for the, the new superintendent will be there, it works for the town administrator. It's not vital that every counselor or school board member would be there, but it would be...
Is that Tuesday? Do you know?
It's Tuesday.
Yep.
Seven o'clock, is it gonna be at seven o'clock?
I don't think so.
And I'm assuming it's gonna be downstairs, so everybody can fit.
Yeah.
So it's a 31st to seven o'clock downstairs.
The night before our next council meeting.
Okay, great.
And next week, we'll have, we will have another subcommittee meeting, the four of us, you know, two from the school board, two from the town council, will talk just a little bit more to firm up the agenda. But I, as I said last time, I think it's, this seems very promising at this time, that, you know, the state law has changed, there's a new superintendent that seems to be very supportive of this kind of arrangement between the town and the school. And I think there's, the general consensus from most of the people I've talked to is there are efficiencies to be had, and that's what we're looking for. And so, that's what we're...
Just to add on that, Superintendent Nedo and I have actually had conversations already, so we can get the ball rolling, once when she starts also, but when the law takes effect. So we're trying to come up with ideas of things that we could look for efficiencies in sharing as well.
So it's my understanding that the new superintendent is gonna be at the meeting, but is not gonna participate in the, in the discussion, or is that, is she gonna...
That was, that came from me, and that's the way I thought I understood things. But I was told that that's not, no, she can, she can make comments and speak, and she has been, so.
That's you.
Yes, I know, you'll feel...
But that makes sense, but who am I to... Well, that's good, at least, at least we can have a full discussion.
Yeah.
No other committee reports? Excuse me, but I forgot to mention that Counselor Burns and Weinstein are absent tonight, and Counselor Nizaro is running late, so I want to get that on the record.
He probably won't make it.
Okay. Well, then, we have three that are absent tonight. Do I have a motion on page 87 for appointment of Rodrick? It's pronounced Crapo?
Yep.
I want to make sure I get it right. For a library trustee, term expiring March of 19.
So moved.
Drive a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
I'd like a motion for Sandra Allen, library trustee, term expiring as well on March of 2019.
So moved.
Second. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
And for the Conservation Commission, Patrick Reynolds, term expiring, excuse me, 2019. It doesn't have a month, Steve.
It would be March.
You might want to have that.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's on the official...
Yeah.
If it actually said March, that was on page, hold on one second, just want to make sure. It's on page 89.
Yeah, it's not on this, this form, but it will be on the appointment form.
Yeah, because we have had issues in the past, so I would, yeah, they just said 2019.
Yeah.
Now we definitely have the date changed. Seeing no lights, please call the roll. Did I get a motion?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Patrick Reynolds for a permanent position on the Conservation Commission.
I don't think it's permanent, but I think it's...
I mean, sorry, sorry. He's, he's an alternate now, so he would be an official member. My apologies.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Counselor.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Counselor, Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
And we have a few resolutions tonight. The first resolution, excuse me, is Resolution 2015-16-46, discontinuing Elm Drive. Whereas after research, Elm Drive has been determined to not be a town-maintained or own street, and whereas there has been a request from the owners of the property in the area to clarify ownership of the street, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the town council clarifies its interest in Elm Drive and pursuant to RSA 231, semicolon, 43, does hereby discontinue any interest the public may have in said street. Obviously, we're gonna get some kind of backup on this, so. The next resolution, 15-16-47, related to the replacement of one of the playground slides at Leo Landro Park and several pieces of equipment that require specialized maintenance and repairs. Whereas the Leo Landro playground structure has a broken slide, which is a safety hazard, and several pieces of equipment that after 16 years require specialized maintenance and repairs. Whereas the town management has purchased a replacement slide under an emergency purchase along with several pieces of equipment that require the specialized maintenance and repairs at a cost not to exceed $15,000. And whereas the Recreation Revolving Fund has an approximate balance of $100,891 as of December 31 of 15, therefore be it resolved that the New Market Town Council does authorize the town administrator to purchase a replacement playground slide and several pieces of equipment that require specialized maintenance and repairs and approve the withdrawal of $15,000 from the Recreation Revolving Fund for the purchase. This is a sole source purchase, as the playground was installed and equipment provided by U2 Play Parks and Playgrounds, Inc., who are the New Hampshire reps for Play World Products.
Just want to clarify that, this is, I did do the purchase for this as an emergency, because if not, the playground would have been shut down during probably some of the busiest times of the year.
This isn't the unit from UNU that we just approved, right?
No, that's, no, this is a, the second part of the playground, so.
Larger.
Yeah. The, the slide had a hole in it, so I said...
Is there any reason they didn't have this on the, on the other resolution we had?
It, it came up after.
Oh. The hole wasn't there before?
There's two different playgrounds, two different pieces of equipment we're talking about. One is a brand-new setup, which is the one you just approved. This one, when we do in the annual inspections, start, what started as a crack is now a hole in the slide. So this is just to replace the slide on that, and some minor pieces of that playground equipment.
Okay, I'm just looking, okay.
Slide for $15,000?
Yeah, it's a, it's one of those plastic molded, has to be the same as the one that was replaced, slides.
It is impressive, because the whole preschool installation was like 18 grand, is it?
Right.
So the whole thing with the slide and everything, and this is...
You can impart your concerns at the next meeting. You can impart your concerns at the next meeting.
I would think for 15 grand, we could get a slide down add cash.
That's huge.
Well, there are, there are other pieces, it says here, so I guess, must be.
Next, Resolution 15-16-48, related to authorizing the TA to enter into agreement for audit services for fiscal years 16 through 18 with, excuse me, three one-year options, whereas the town of Newmarket solicited for bids, proposals for audit services, and whereas three firms submitted proposals, and whereas after evaluating the proposals and interviewing prospective audit firms, the interim finance director recommends a proposal submitted by MacPage LLC, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does approve the TA to enter into an agreement with MacPage LLC. All right, there's one of these, I'm gonna ask, okay, it's not this one, I guess. Resolution 15-16-49, related to transferring funds from the Downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund, whereas the May 10 of 211 town meeting established the Downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of paying the Downtown TIF debt service, and whereas the Town Council has been appointed as agent to expend from the Capital Reserve Fund for this purpose, and whereas the town must pay debt service interest of $9,986.43 on July 15 of 16, and principal and interest totaling $87,318.75 on January 15 of 17, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve a transfer of $97,305.18 from the Downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund to the General Fund for the purpose of paying the fiscal year 2017 Downtown TIF debt service. And this resolution, I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the council to just read it in, when we don't read, you know, five pages, would I just read the resolution?
By title only.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with me reading it by title only?
Do you like a motion or not?
You can just, just consensus is fine.
Yeah, I think by title only is great.
Resolution 2015-16-50, related to the town's investment policy. And I'll just read the first, whereas pursuant to RSA 4197, the Town Council shall annually review and adopt an investment policy for the investment of public funds in conformance with applicable statutes, and now therefore be it resolved, the council adopts an investment policy, and if people are interested, they can read the full policy, it's fairly lengthy.
Statutes.
And lastly-
Just on that one, I probably would, but I would like to be sure that for, for next meeting, that we have the old policy with the strikeouts and changes for the new policy.
There are none.
What's that?
There are none.
It's exactly the same.
But annually, we have to adopt it pursuant to state law.
Okay, I didn't realize, thanks.
Basically, we can't make any real investments, I think it comes down to basically safe, you know, FDIC-type stuff or, and whatnot. And the last resolution is 2015-16-51, related to the police station and recreation centers siding replacement or repairs, whereas the siding in the police station and recreation center have begun to rot, hmm, and need replacement, repair, of sheathing if necessary, and whereas the proposed project cost is as follows. Okay, the police station is 39,500, the community center is 28,500, the total being 68,000. I'm assuming, by the way, Steve, that these are guesstimates, since they're not really sure until they get into it?
Right.
Okay. Whereas the, and we're gonna have all that information.
Yep.
Whereas the Building Improvements Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of 228,706 as of March 31 of 16, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby authorize the withdrawal of an amount not to exceed 68,000, and authorize the town administrator to enter into construction contract related to this project, or contracts. And that is that. Any closing comments by counselors? Counselor Pike, do you have a, oh, that one, listen, any closing comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
That's great.
Very good. I think that might be close.